Brian, you with us? Brian, I cannot see you with that light behind you. All right, we'll start, oh, open the meeting at six o'clock and then we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Now, yeah. Adjustments to the agenda, I do have one adjustment to the agenda under new business, I want to add the Rangeley North subdivision amendment. Do we have anything else failing? Nope, all right. Is there any public here to speak on a non-agenda item? No? All right, review minutes from February 24th.
Make the motion to set the minutes from February 24th.
Wes made a motion, a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was three of them, really. Correspondence, we have a letter from Mr. Peter Johnson, but Bailey spoke to him, so that is all taken care of. So, new business, we will be scheduling a public hearing on March 24th for go over changes to chapter 38, which is our building codes.
Is it? All right, let's take it back up.
Let's plan on having it at five, if we can. Is everybody okay? Brian, are you okay with five o'clock?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going with five o'clock? All right, five o'clock. And then the Rangeley North subdivision amendment, we were provided a subdivision amendment application for Rangeley North LLC and it is to I don't have it right. It is to take a part, a little part, I don't know, like a separate section from the end of Big Snow and Taylor Marrow, so we will have to set up a public hearing for this as well. You guys want to do it?
Do it the same day?
The same day, right after that meeting? After the public hearing for the chapter 38, that we're free, Brian?
I, I'm sorry, can you repeat that once more?
It's a subdivision amendment for Rangeley North.
Okay, and on what date?
It'd be the same date as the chapter 38 public hearing, it'd be March 24th.
And that's a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, that'll work.
All right, so it would start at five for the chapter 38 and then the Rangeley North public hearing would start right after.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, so, old business. Now, we need to make a motion or not. I made a motion that we have a public hearing for chapter 28 and the Rangeley North subdivision amendment on March 24th, starting at 5:00 PM.
A second.
All right, I made a motion, Brian, second.
Just quick correction to chapter 38, you said 28.
Oh, thank you, chapter 38. All right, I have a motion and a second.
Well, still second.
You did second it. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, three of them. All right, on to continuing business, which is the subdivision for Miniqua Lane. Map seven, it's lots 32, 33, 35, or 35A. Map 11, lots six. Right, so we already had a public hearing on this. Brian, I don't know if you can bring the map up on your computer or if you saw it in your packet, the whole things that we asked, to be added, was added on the plan.
I've got the maps.
All right. Does anybody have, Tom Kennison is here. Does anybody on any board have any questions for him before we move into the actual application?
My personal opinion is that they've been very, very thorough in, in their application and, and in looking out, you know, the, how Rangeley well-being, I'll put it that way, that, how Rangeley is interpreted. I'm not sure how to leave it there, but I, I think they've been very thoughtful about the way they've gone about this.
I have to agree with you. Do you have any questions, Wes?
No, it looks good name.
All right, is there anybody out there in Zoom world that has any questions? Raise your hands. Scott Gray.
Yeah, we pursuant to the last meeting that we had, I think Mr. Kennison indicated that he would amend the application or what have you to put a stipulation in there, which he says he normally would do, but forgot to have the parcels not be allowed to be additionally subdivided. I was wondering if that was done.
As it is, it was added in. Which number was it?
I don't know, I saw it earlier.
It is in there. It has been added to the plan. Let me let me turn off the volume, I can hear it.
May I answer that?
Yes, you can.
It's, it's item number 11 on Would you like me to read it? She's gone.
Tom, that's the one.
So, it said, number 11, only one single-family dwelling shall be built on lots 1 through 4 and no further divisional laws will be allowed.
Okay, great, and as a second question, the people that they brought, bought those lots from was a lumber company that accessed our road to get to other parts of the thing. He has sold access of the road to the, to the LLC. But he continues to use the, the road for logging. And the question is, once this all takes place, I mean, now that he is no longer an owner of the road and no longer required to maintain it, you know, the logging trucks on a, you know, a two-lane dirt road, kind of, you know, that's a lot of wear and tear, which he is no longer responsible for paying for, so is that access going to be restricted or removed at some point?
I'll have Tom answer that, but I don't think, I think it was an agreement.
That's correct. The only way I can answer that is after the last meeting, I went back to the owners to make sure. I went back to all the deeds to make positive, there is no right-of-way to that backland across Matigua Way, or Road, as you call it. What they did is they, they gave verbal permission to use that to log that area throughout this winter. But there is no deeded right-of-way to go across there. And I can't prove it to you tonight, but I can, I have sent the deeds to you, you all have a copy of the deed, my original application. And there's no deeded right-of-way across there. There was a verbal agreement that they had. The other thing, which is all part of the same thing, the parties on the road were concerned about people having a right-of-way to dodge pond from the backland. And item number 15, it says there should be no right-of-way and easement or license to access Dodge Pond from any other lot other than the four lots in the subdivision. So everything that the abutters or the people of the public here have asked for, I have given them in writing. And I sent it all to Bailey, I believe she passed it out to the planning board members.
Thank you, Tom. Does anybody else have any other questions before we move forward? It's kind of raging here. No? All right. Ready, Brian? Oh, I'm sorry, Wendy Gordon?
I think, I think I see someone talking on mute.
Oh, here I am. I'm sorry, I got in a little late, I wasn't allowed in for a while, so I'm in now.
All right, hold on, I don't know who's talking, who's talking.
Linda Smith is talking. My husband and I have grayed a lot on Miniqua Road. And I'm afraid I didn't hear Scott's questions, but so if they've been answered, I'm sorry, I just got in. I was waiting to be let in, so my question is to Tom, and my concern too is Scott's, you know, the, the person who has most wear and tear on the road is Severn with his logging trucks. I was just up there last week and a huge truck went down the road full of logs. And my question is, property four, I believe, is where that gravel road off Miniqua belongs, so whoever buys lot four will own that gravel road to the other side of the road on the right. So, when does Severn, I know he has been given permission to use the road to be logging in his lot, which I assume is lot six, when does that stop? Is that stopped when the property is bought on lot four?
It stops, well, twofold, I'm going to be careful how I answer that because I don't have the authority to stop it. But with the spring coming, they're going to have to stop logging in, in anywhere, not just there. I have talked to the owners of the property now, and they have assured me they were not going to give any right-of-way across that property. That's the best I can do, other than the fact there's no right-of-way there now. So all he's got is a verbal agreement to use it throughout this winter, and it's supposed to be finished here probably by the end of the month.
Tom, do you, this is Doug Melville.
I don't.
Or the
Hold on one second. We don't just speak out. Wendy, you actually had a question?
Actually, I'm sorry, I, I saw Linda trying to speak and was just trying to stop the conversation for a moment.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. And then Chris, did you have your feedback?
Same thing, I saw that Linda wanted to speak, so I was just
Yeah, I was here. All right, Doug, go ahead.
Sure, I was just going to follow up with the conversation. At the end of this season, is there an intent by the LLC to have Severns contribute to the repair of the road for the damage that is being, that will be done through this season?
I can't honestly answer that, so I'd rather not. My, in working with this company that owns this piece of land, the LLC, they're very nice, easy to work with, and I, I, all I can say is I will approach them with that. I will ask them to either they take care of it, or they go back to Severns' company and have them take care of it. I can't stand here and say, yes, that'll be done, but everything I've asked them so far, they've done without even hesitation. And everything that you asked us last meeting, I went to them the next day, they said absolutely. So I changed every, not everything, I changed those questions on the, on the, on the plan. But I can't honestly tell you that they're going to pay to have the road fixed. I can't imagine they wouldn't, but I, I'm not the one that's going to make that decision.
No, thank you, Tom, that's reasonable.
Thank you, Doug.
All right, thank you. Give me one second. All right, there is no one else? We'll go ahead and move forward with the vote. All right, so I make a motion that applicant has
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Who else said aye? The planning board has authority to consider this request for a new subdivision plan as required by the town code, chapter 33. That's my motion.
A second.
Give me a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number three, the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution.
Wes, could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, okay, number three, the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making this determination, we shall consider the elevational land above sea level in relation to the floodplains. I don't think we have any floodplains there. Nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluents, the availability of, availability of streams for disposal of effluents, and the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations. So, my motion is that it will not result in undue water or air.
Bailey, did you get that? All right, I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the proposed subdivision, I mean, proposed subdivision has fish and water available for the receivable means of the subdivision.
Sure.
Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, number five, municipal water supply, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable burden by supply, there is no will not cause an unreasonable burden, that's my motion.
My statement of motion, it will not create unreasonable burden since there is not existing water supply. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed subdivision, proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in lands to pass for groundwater so that it can be used for unhealthy conditions.
I second it. Exactly. No, there regarding earthquake, so.
I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number seven, traffic. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. And if the proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances into a state or state-owned highway located outside the urban area of an urban compact municipality, the Department of Transportation, by that means yeah, no, this isn't going to be, we have four lots on private air road.
Wes motion. Second. Any discretion?
No discussion.
I'm sorry?
No discussion.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I make a motion that number eight is not applicable. Why is that yet?
Oh, is it not?
It's not, because it's not, we just do services.
Okay.
Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I make a motion that the subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on discussing the leak disposal of solid waste.
I second.
I made a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 10, aesthetic control and natural beauty, the proposed subdivision will not have undue adverse effects on the scenic and natural beauty of the area. That's my motion.
Wes made a motion. Second. Any discretion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that the proposed subdivision does conform with the subdivision regulations, ordinances, comprehensive development plan, or the use plan of the town.
All second.
I made a motion, Brian, second, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 The lot size, width, depth, shape, and orientation in the minimum building setback line, so the appropriate subdivision and to the type of development and use. So, yeah, we're we're within the guideline, so, so, yeah. We're good there, I'm motion.
Did you get that, Bailey?
But, yeah, if you, I, I don't know if you guys can put the microphone between you?
It actually is between us. Wes just has that soft voice. I'm loud when he talks.
Yeah, he, he's a very gentle man.
Yeah.
You guys kill.
All right, so Wes made a motion. Brian, if you second that, I apologize.
I did.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The lot dimensions do conform to the requirements of the town's zoning ordinance.
Second.
I made a motion, Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Number 14, the lot lines are perpendicular to the stream. That's my motion.
Wes made a motion. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I can see you now, Brian. It was, I, you were like, it was black. Dirt.
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
Saying, I couldn't see you, the screen was black.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I can see you now. Um, 15.
No, we don't have any five lots or positive lots.
So I make a motion that 15 is not applicable.
A second.
The motion, Wes second, any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
16, lot access, every lot shall have access to it that is significant to afford reasonable means of ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, that both all those likely in eager desire to access property and use. Yeah, lots are large enough for all that.
So Wes made a motion.
I would second.
Brian, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 17, easements, we don't have easements.
Yeah, they're not always going to have some of those.
But they're all going to be privately owned, so you won't need any of that.
Yeah.
Well, you'll need easements on you're going to need easements on the, on sewer lines.
So. All right.
Because it's one subject, right? One giant subject.
Well, everybody has their own tank.
Everybody has their own tank, but it's one, one leach and field, so that's all going to need easements on it.
All right, I made a motion that easements across lots shall be provided for utilities where necessary and shall be at least 20 feet wide.
I second that.
I made a motion, Wes second. Any discretion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Where subdivision is traversed by water course, drainage way, channel, or stream, those shall be provided stormwater easement or drainage right-of-way.
I'll second that.
Yeah, there's going to be drainage, right?
Yeah. Wes made the motion, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Well, there's, there's
There is, yeah.
So I make a motion that any easement required for ditches or storage seawer shall be dedicated to is that right?
Private road. It's not the town's responsibility.
Yeah, so I made a motion that number 19 is not applicable.
I not click the bowl, or should we just do it? No, we would not not applicable, or should we just do it? No, it's not gonna be dedicated to the town.
Alright, I'll amend my motion Bailey. That any easements required for ditches or storm sewers, uh, will not be dedicated to the town. Where this is a private subdivision.
Correct. I'll second that.
So I made a motion last second. Any discretion? All those in favors, the aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, uh, the subdivision is adequate financial and technical best to meet the standards of this selection.
I'll second.
I made a motion last second. Any discretion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Twenty-one, sub-surface waters, um, and ever situated entirely of a party within the water, sort of any pond, lake, or within two hundred fifty feet of wetland, great pond, or river. The proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of that body of water or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that body of water. Um, I say it's not going to. Because we're following our set, our height and foot setbacks off the lake, and then we have this here. But this, uh, amendment in the subdivision notes, number thirteen, that, um, contractors are responsible to very, oh, no, not that one.
Yes.
Number twelve, low impact best management practices, but not.
Wes made a motion, Bailey, did you get that? Alright.
I agree, it's low impact.
So is that you speaking again?
Uh, yeah, I was, a motion made?
Yes.
Yeah.
I will second the motion.
Right, any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Alright, I make a motion, the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
I second.
I made a motion, last second. Any discretion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I, just, to, uh, mention it, we, we have a number of people watching. Nobody seems to be involved, you know, the, no, nobody seems to be mentioning anything that we're talking about. I don't know if they're disinvolved or just kind of watching what we're doing.
Uh, at this moment, they had the public hearing and fired us going into the vote.
Okay.
Um.
Uh, twenty-three, flood areas.
Is this flood plain, uh, in the flood zone? I guess he isn't.
I guess it's not. That'd be a question for Bailey, though.
Bailey.
It's not in the flood zone.
Perfect, so this line, twenty-three, I make a motion is not applicable.
Wes made a motion, I'll second. Any discretion? All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Twenty-four, uh, all freshwater wetlands in the proposed subdivision have been identified on the map, um. Or I don't know, have they, Rebecca?
Yes.
All of the freshwater wetlands are mapped, they've been mapped by, uh, North Country soils.
Okay.
If you look at the maps, you'll see all of the configuration of them.
See, like.
Yeah, they just got stuff drawn over there. Make a motion that they have been mapped out.
I would second the motion.
Wes' motion, Brian, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, I make a motion that twenty-five is not applicable, there is no farm land.
Second.
I made a motion, last second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-six, do you have any rivers or anything?
I don't see any in here. Um, there is no river streams that are going through there, is there?
No, there's not, there are some seasonal runoffs. And, uh, those are identified as you, if you look to the map on lot number four. Um, that's the only place there's a seasonal runoff or defined, I should say.
Now, four, you see it Rebecca? Uh, must be these here. Coming down from the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you see the color?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so my motion is there is, uh, there is no river stream or brook in the subdivision.
Wes made a motion. I'll second, any discretion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, looking at the plan, I make a motion that the subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management.
I second.
I made a motion last second, any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Uh. Speaking lots. What's this speaking lot, Rebecca?
Many lots in the proposed subdivision should have a great as these features would want to. Lots created, the subdivision may lot depth is shorter than three three, greater than five to one. I make a motion that none of the lots have a lot depth to shore crashing ratio greater than five to one.
I'd second the motion.
I made a motion, Brian, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh.
Um, there. Um, phosphorus. Bailey, can you speak to the phosphorus impact analysis?
Like?
Well, is, uh, I don't have the actual work concrete soil service report in front of me.
Will you have the notes on the plan regarding phosphorus?
Yes, they are, they're at the right-hand side, it says phosphorus notes, and it ties into the phosphorus report which North Country soils prepared, and I presented it as part of the original application to everybody. It's a three-page, one, two, three, four-page report, uh, which is part of your application.
Right.
My application, but it was given to you.
Yes, I know, I, I would have that in front of me. But everything, um, hopefully, for record, Bailey. Sorry, I just want to double check.
Um, I don't have it right on my desk.
I don't, I might.
Hold on, let's see. I don't think there was any issues, okay?
He's a lot.
No, it's not. It's like, it's like prehended.
No, I think we're good now.
I'll say?
Yeah.
Alright, sorry about that, everyone. Um, so I make a motion that there will not be any, uh, effects of the proposed subdivision, um, um, it will not create, uh, an increase in phosphorus concentration.
I'd second that motion.
Motion, Brian, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Number three is not applicable, subdivision does not cross municipality ground boundaries.
Wes made a motion. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are any of these, um, I think we're, we're discussing, um, are any of the lots subject to liquidation harvesting?
No.
Alright, so I make a motion, number three is not applicable.
I'd second.
Not applicable, or you want to be, no.
I believe it's non-applicable.
Okay.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so I want to thank Tom for, um, working with the board and with those, um, abutters and having and listening to the concerns, um, it is greatly appreciated. And, um, and just being a part of this process and answering how, there's been a lot of questions, so we thank you. Uh, with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, approve, grant the subdivision application for, uh, mid-what, road, under six ESPL.
I would second that motion.
Alright, so I made a motion, Brian, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, everyone, um. Brian, you will put this, um, in your email for after sign. The application, um, if you can come by the office. We have, um, roundtable plans that need to be signed, and then we'll have this one as well, alright?
Okay.
The next meeting, um, is gonna be March twenty-fourth, again, we have six P M. on our agenda, but it's the public hearings will be, uh, start at five, starting with chapter thirty-eight.
True.
And.
Five P M. on the twenty-fourth?
Be five P M. on the twenty-fourth, we'll start at the period, and then go into the range of art. Subdivision amendment, um. Oh, take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn, and, take, uh, Bailey?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna ask Bailey if she was gonna be in, in the morning, I'd like to go over a few things with her about my application.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll give you a call then. Just need to know which next step you want me to take.
Wes made a motion, I'll second. Any discussion on the hearing? All those in favor, make a aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank everybody for your time tonight and going through this process, I really appreciate it, um.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too.
Thank you, Tom, we appreciate you being transparent.
I try.